He's on his way from San Francisco. Are you serious?
That was cups. I drew mine last night. Yeah, I think everything happened. You got two cups. I had a couple of them. I got here, I got here, but.
You saw the meeting was at seven?
Well, I know it was at seven thirty. I didn't want to stay home. I need to go to the sports, basketball.
I don't know, you know, it's okay. I see multiple lipstick marks, but I'm fine with it.
I, I don't.
Hey, you can probably take one of those. She's taking the old cups away.
No, no, no. I, I have a cup of coffee and that's a fresh cup, so thank you though.
It's just, I'm okay.
Yeah. All of them were yesterday.
Don't make us feel like we've been here pulling an all-nighter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Mayor Pro Tem Lent who will probably be joining us a few minutes late.
He's literally walking in.
He's walking in as I speak.
Great.
Running, actually.
So do we have an adoption of the agenda?
An adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that brings us to our continuation of the budget workshop. And depart, uh, item A, which is department presentations. And the first person, first group up is the Public Works, which is budget pages one seventeen through one sixty-four.
Honorable Mayor, Member of Town, Councilmembers, good evening. Always happy to be here. Sure, please, there we go. Thank you so much. So yes, this is indeed the presentation on Public Works and this first slide is a breakout.
See it on our screens too?
Oh, is it not there? It would be a lot easier rather than you turning around or reflecting it off the back wall. Yes.
There we go.
All right, we're, we're up and running?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure everyone could see it. Very good, thank you. So this is a representation of the thirteen different departments that Public Works is responsible for. And there, there's a couple of highlights next to them that talk about some of the additional stuff that we've picked up. And some of the things that you might not be aware of. So like, for instance, on the second bullet down there, you see next to storm drain, it says floodplain administration. That's one of the major activities we have to deal with when we're dealing with FEMA. And then every of the other ones that are in there indicate when we pick up additional duties. And that'll be important to you when we get to the end of the presentation I'm going to do because you're going to see that a lot of these picking up of additional duties were coincidental with when we were downsizing staff as well. So it's going to speak to one of the positions that I'm requesting for in the budget. So obviously you see next to streets, we picked up a complete street safety committee in two thousand and thirteen. Under the NPTDs or the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Really, one of the biggest challenges that we've had is when the local regional water quality control board came out and issued that first municipal regional permit, and that was in two thousand and nine. And they're getting ready to issue what they're calling MRP two point oh. In fact, I think the mayor and I were invited to go and speak before the board tomorrow regarding the PCB issue. So that'll be forthcoming the next month or so. We picked up responsibility for the EOC in two thousand and six, the Marina in two thousand and twelve, and we just picked up open space and ecology in two thousand and fourteen. This is similar to a slide I showed you last year. One of the things that I'm really happy to report is that we had a very big increase, a forty-three percent increase in users and service requests. So on the one hand, it's really good that we're getting folks to utilize that. That really allows us to get the service request to the person most responsible for it, but it also talks about the increase in workload that we've had and we've had that much of an increase in there. And really you'll see that it's the same categories as last year, the ones that are really our biggest requests. Buildings and parks maintenance is a big one, street trees, street signs and street lights are always popular and weeds, trash, we get those reported a lot. We continue to have a problem with dumping and so that's why those end up being our big request items. Here's the highlights from the budget and I'm going to go through all of those except for the last one. I'll save that for the last, after I go over another slide. The first item we're looking for is a Public Works Maintenance Worker Two for NPTDs, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And what I want to tell you mostly about this is that this position is funded by the increase in franchise fees that we had when we renegotiated the solid waste fees. And the reason for that is as we were going through that agreement and those negotiations, we were making assumptions based on what we knew then, what we thought the Regional Water Quality Control Board was going to require us to do to be in full compliance with paragraph ten, which is the trash and litter removal. And at that time, we had estimated X amount of increase in street sweeping, X amount of increase in full capture trash devices, and associated amount of maintenance of the full cash, full tractor cash devices. And what we've discovered in the interim, as they've, this continues to evolve, is that we can do a pretty significant amount, less of street sweeping. We have to install some more full capture trash devices and we've got grant funding to do that, but we're going to have to do a whole lot more maintenance. So of the money that we have gathered through our increased franchise fee, we were able to pull out a hundred and seven thousand that we thought we were going to need. And we're going to be able to use that for this employee so that this employee can primarily be doing the maintenance on the full capture trash devices that are going to be out there. The advantage of that is that this employee is also going to be available to work on the remainder of the storm drain system and we haven't had anyone in that assignment for three or four years. So it, it gives us a little bit of flexibility, but we've got the funding for it. And the reality is it's work that's going to have to be done anyway. So if the council were to say, well, we don't think you need another employee there, you're not going to do that, I'm still going to have to have nearly that same amount of money that I am going to have to allocate for someone to do the maintenance. Under contract. So I just think it's my recommendation that it's, it's to our advantage to have that person be working for us. The next item I'll talk, I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. The next item we'll talk about is a supplemental storm drain cleaning. This is something that happens on about a ten-year cycle. The last time we went through this was two thousand and three, two thousand and four-ish. Back at that time, there was also a concern, there were a few citizens that were expressing their opinion that there was an excess amount of sediment coming down from the northeast ridge development and that it was causing increased sediment deposition in the lagoon. You, you may recall that we went out and we hired a consultant who specializes in bay and coastal areas. We did a number of studies on that. We had saichi plates and placed out there so you could see how deep it was, you could see the clarity. We had different measuring points that were put out and the final result and the final conclusion was that the lagoon is not experiencing an unusual or an unexpected amount of sediment deposition. We do live on a mountain, there's going to be some material that comes down, that's what happens. There's, you know, if you're a scientist, there's a big fancy word for it called eutrophication and it's a natural basis of how lakes and such fill in and, you know, if you're, if you're interested in it, Google Tuolumne Meadows and look at that history sometime. It's, it's one of the more famous examples that people use. And what they also discovered is that they did a sieve analysis of the sediment that they were finding in the bottom of our storm drain pipes. And they couldn't say that it was just coming from the northeast ridge. In fact, their position or their conclusion was that it was coming from all of the Guadalupe watersheds and it was coming from the San Borrell Mountain. It, it was that sort of mix. So it's to be expected, it's what happens. The area where it's settled is what we call the mixing basin, which is in front of PSI, the business PSI, kind of behind Valley Drive Lift Station. And that's what a mixing basin does. The waters come together from different pipes. It comes from Valley Drive and it comes from our main pipes in town. And it settles the water, so it slows the velocity of it. And what that does is that causes the sediment to drop out. So we're, we're trying to get that sediment to drop out there so that it doesn't go into the lagoon, but periodically you have to clean it. And, and we're at that point. Where if we don't get it cleaned this year, next couple of years, if you have a major storm, if we have a really heavy storm, I'll call it, I'll guess and say a fifty-year storm, you would flush it all out into the lagoon. And that's something I think we're trying to avoid. So that's why that's there. Uh, the median walkway weeding, I probably could have used.
Before you go onto that, would, would you explain what the ninety thousand dollars exactly is for? What, what is the process, the mechanical process?
The mechanical process is we have to put men and equipment into that storm drain. So you'll see the little skid steers that a lot of people call bobcats. Are you familiar with those? Okay. So we have to open up the grates and we have to lower that equipment in there and put those in there because there's that much sedimentation. We're thinking, we're estimating it's three hundred to five hundred cubic yards of material that's going to be hauled out. So it, it's, it's long, it's grueling, it, it takes a lot of time and you're working in relatively tight quarters. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It was just, it was just kind of a number and I didn't have any.
Right, like what could that possibly be, right? Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay, great, thank you. So median walkway weeding, I probably could have come up with a, with a better term of art on that. It's really not so much just the weeding of the medians we have, but particularly as we're dealing with droughts, it's keeping them cleaned up, it's keeping them trimmed up. It's, it's the extra amount of time that we need to spend on them to make sure that they're not just completely dying and falling off. So that's, that's what we're asking for ten thousand there. Sign retroreflivity, I, I love these big fancy words we come up with. Back in two thousand and eight, the Federal Highway Administration published one of the many updates that it does for their federal manual for uniform traffic control devices, the MUTCD, which California usually reviews and makes some minor changes to and they adopt it. And what they required was that by June of this year, we were supposed to have developed a program where you go by and you ascertain what the capability of each of your stop signs is to reflect light. That's what retroreflivity is. So basically what it's trying to say is if I'm driving down the road and I hit a sign with my headlights, am I going to see it or not? So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do there. We're trying to be in compliance with federal and state law that we've developed a program. Some of that money, quite frankly, is going to be to rent the equipment to do it because we don't, we don't have a gun for it. If you were a large transportation agency, you might go off and buy those, they're relatively expensive. And I think all of us know here, one of the things we see in this town is you can always tell which direction the prevailing winds are from. Because if the sign is facing the prevailing winds, really many of them are faded and they need to be replaced anyway. They need to be upgraded to the modern standard.
What about curbs? Are they included?
No, sir, curbs are not.
But there are curbs that people run into if they don't have some kind of reflective paint or something on.
There are, and we tend to deal with those on, on sort of a one-off basis. If we're seeing it happening or if we're getting reports on it, oftentimes what we do, there are small epoxy type signs you can put on there, but one, one of the relatively easy fixes that we've used, very similar to what we did out here on the sidewalk or the stairs going down into the parking lot, is we take paint, we put paint on the curb. And then back in the old days, what we used to do, the way we used to make your, your stripes on the road retroreflective was you had a bag of glass beads and you would just kind of hand sew them into the paint and that's what we do on those curbs. So, but if spots come to mind or if people are complaining to you about, about places, let us know and we can go out and do that. That's a, that's a relatively quick fix for us.
So the retroreflectivity was due to be completed, um.
Was due to have the program initiated by this month.
And is this cost to actually complete the program or is this to?
Have it initiated.
Initiate the program and get the data?
Yes, ma'am. Just, just initiate it. To have a, have a program for inspection in place.
Okay, and, and how is that, um, is that a contract labor that we're looking at doing the program?
No, we're, right now, we're anticipating that we're going to use our summer interns to do the work, but we're going to have to hire, we're going to have to rent the gun. It's, I, I call it a gun. It's, I. Do you happen to know the name?
A light meter type thing?
I, I will accept that, ma'am. It's, it's a light meter of some kind. That's what it is. It's, it's got the capability to send out a light wave and measure back how much of it's reflected. I don't, I'm, I'm blanking completely on the.
Everything with a trigger to use a gun. It's a military thing, huh?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the next project we've got on there is the handrail installation on the alleyway stairs below Alvarado. That's that small stretch of the alleyway that, obviously it's below Alvarado, where there are stairs on it. The stairs could use a little bit of improvement. I think handrails seem like a really good idea on there to make that so it's not a trip and fall hazard. And then it leads you to a steep driveway, but it's, it's a nicely paved driveway. So this would just get us some handrails on it so that it's really apparent the stairs are there and maybe help people access it from the street. The next project is the safe routes to school and that came out of the really fantastic work that your complete street safety committee has been doing. We've submitted an active transportation projects grant for that. So that's why it's listed right now as we're anticipating that we're going to get fifty thousand dollars out of the grant and we're going to ask for fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund to pay for that work. So that's the match amount that we put in. So we think we're going to be quite successful there. Public facilities condition assessment. Uh, this is, I'm going to call this a city manager project because I think Clay asked us to put this together. And what this is, is to go out and hire a consultant who specializes in their work. Well, they come by and they inventory your building, all of your buildings that the city owns. They inventory its existing condition. They give you an estimate of the remaining useful life and very much like what you have if you've ever lived in an HOA, where they have an estimate of the future needs that you're going to have. They tell you. So they'll, they'll tell you like, okay, in this building here, you have X amount of water heaters and they're at this age and this is when we think water heaters need to be replaced. Window work, this, you know, you need to recaulk your windows every so often. The major HVAC, the heating ventilation and air conditioning equipment you have here has this sort of service life on it. These parts need this amount of work. And so what that's going to help us do is it's going to give the city an idea of, of what sort of maintenance needs we're going to have so that we can start planning for it now. Because if you think about it, really, I think the youngest building we have right now is fifteen years old. So some of the buildings are going to start showing their age. They're going to need some attention. Um, they're not, they're not really living things, but certainly they are things that deteriorate over time and they have moving parts in them. And, and it just seems really like a good idea to at least start to understand what your exposure could be on that now. So before I talk about the last position, I want to go to the next slide here and just kind of take you on a little trip down memory lane. This is, as the title says, a staffing changes over time. And I want to be clear that this does not include the Marina staff, nor does it include the part-time employee that we have for open space and ecology. But what you see there on the, you see our two major divisions. So you see engineering and administration on the left, you see operations and maintenance on the right. And then it looks at what sort of staffing levels we've had over the years. So you see oh six, oh seven, you know, pretty robust, seven in engineering, thirteen and a half in operations and maintenance. Ten eleven, we go down to five and a half. And losing two engineers was really a, a significant loss for us there. We had had five engineers prior to that. And, and I'm not going to suggest to you that, you know, people would say, well, you know, you had a five hundred percent workload, you lost two, that means everybody else is working a hundred and sixty-seven percent, right? Of course not, that's ridiculous. I mean, the most you can really expect a person to work is a hundred percent. But the problem is, the challenge that we've experienced is that the responsibility and the duties that those other engineers had still are here, are still things that need to get done, but we just have less time to get to them. And we are kind of, I, I think the example I'll use is the Teatro Zanzano, where you're spinning a plate on the end of a stick and every now and then one falls and you reach out and you try and grab that one. And so we're not really doing it in, in the best fashion. The same time, if you look over at what happened in that period FY ten eleven over on the O and M side, you're going to see that we started to lose our mid-management capability over there. So many years ago, we had decided we weren't going to have a superintendent in the operations and maintenance section. We had a working supervisor. In this time period, we lost a supervisor, we lost a team leader to retirement, and then we consolidated two of our utility teams into one. And that team leader is supposed to be a working team leader. So a, a bit of a challenge for us. Then we come down to thirteen fourteen, see the engineering division is starting to look pretty good, although, you know, one of the bodies I've counted there is we did, we did pick up the open space and ecology position. Uh, we did have one part-time employee become full-time and we did start to bring the engineering division up a little bit by bringing an engineering technician up. I want to focus on that a little bit because that's really what we're going to try and do as well with this regulatory compliance manager position. I'm not asking to bring back two licensed civil engineers. What we're trying to bring back is two, is two mid-level employees. Or actually, I'm sorry, we've already brought one back. So this time I'm trying to bring one mid-level employee. And the challenge is what we really need is just someone who can provide the oversight for the day-to-day operations of both the department and how we interact with external regulatory agencies. And some of the examples that, that's involved in there are the extensive oversight that we need to develop, implement, track and report the long-term trash load reductions that we have from the regional board. The oversight of municipal operation permit requirements that we have to do from the regional board. Compliance with all of the Bay Area Climate Management District requirements for stationary sources, all of our pump station generators. And the evolving requirements that we have for our rolling stock, for our equipment, for the trucks and stuff, we're continuing to have to stay on top of that and make sure that we're managing with their requirements. The compliance that we have to do with county environmental health permitting requirements relative to the corporation yard. The compliance with the collection, storage and disposal of hazardous, which is mostly household materials now. The county used to do all that, now we do it and we have to bring it to other places. Compliance with OSHA mandates and so forth. So, so I, I think you can understand that what I'm trying to do is bring that, bring a person on to pick that up. Because what happened was in the years, many years prior, in oh six, oh seven, about the time the recession hit, we had mid-level management who could do that and those duties were spread out amongst O and M. What happened by the time we got to ten eleven is as we started to lose the supervisory position, in fact, at one point in time, we got to a challenge where we were realizing things were not being run very well, particularly in the department. And we kind of did some internal sourcing on that and we, we found out what the problem was and it was me. Uh, and, and the reason it was me was that after we lost our supervisor and a team leader, I had just said, well, you know, I've always been the guy that managed the O and M division as the direct supervisor, so I'll keep doing that. And at the same time, we had also lost the engineer that ran our NPTD department. I said, well, okay, well, you know, I guess I'll just keep doing that too. And of course, and, and just a couple of years prior to that, we had picked up OEFs as well. So I said, well, I'll just keep doing that. And it's like, God, Randy, you, you know, you've spread yourself too thin and you're not doing anything. You're not, you're not doing anything terribly well. You're not providing enough supervision. So what we, so part of what we did for that is that the two remaining engineers, Karen and Jerry, picked up additional responsibilities. We, we shifted some load to them. Now Karen and Jerry for the last couple of years have both been the direct supervisors of the operations and maintenance teams and they've really been able to do a much better job at it than I can because they've got the time to focus on that. They were also able to provide some of the bandwidth for some of this regulatory stuff we have. But now the challenge we have is that worked for us while we were going through a recession, when we didn't have a lot of money available to do like the forty mini CIP projects that were approved in the budget last year. We didn't have any funding at all for CIPs, whereas now this year we're looking at a four million, a four million dollar Marina dredging project. We've got, I don't recall off the top of my head how many millions of dollars are going out in bonds for water and sewer projects. We've got a water and sewer master plan. We've got a bike pad master plan. We've got, which is coming to you next council meeting. We've got a design going on for a library. So at the engineering division level, there isn't the bandwidth at all to deal with those regulatory issues. And at the O and M level, quite frankly, what you've got is one team leader, the team leader for the utility team, who's been sourced to do so much of this stuff that I have trouble looking at you or I would have trouble looking at an outside accountant and saying, yes, all of the enterprise funds that we're receiving are being spent in the enterprise fund. Because in years past, what we've done is we, we shop labor back between what we, our general fund accounts, our Sierra Point L and L accounts, and our utility accounts. We, we, we loan people to each other and, and we do it and we, we keep, you know, a loose accounting of it and make sure, hey, yeah, you owe me a guy for a couple of days. Remember I loaned him to you for that. But it's gotten to the point now where he has stretched so far into general fund stuff that on the one hand, I'm concerned because I think we probably shouldn't be doing that. And on the other hand, I'm concerned is that our water and our sewer systems are not getting the attention they need because we've taken a very important working body away from it. So I hope that explains what I'm trying to do with this regulatory compliance manager and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I, I have one question. You mentioned the project for the Marina, which is proceeding and they're going very strongly. But you talk about the regulatory that we need to do here and I thought we hired a consultant to do that and manage that project for us.
So the consultant does not do a hundred percent of the work. There is a consultant doing construction management who's out on the dredge with them every day, but I'm still doing the project management oversight on that. I'm the project manager for it. They're just the construction manager.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're ready for questions or how do you want to proceed?
Is this your present?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
You completed your presentation. Okay, sure. Would you like to?
Yeah, I could, if it's okay. I've been looking through, you know, the book budget and just have a couple of things that I would, you know, appreciate your explaining a little more so that I have a clearer sense of what's going on. So I'm first of all looking, uh, starting on page one twenty-one. So that's the Public Works Street Storm Drain Lighting Maintenance and you partially.
Yes, sir, the main page for that, right? Sure.
Big pardon?
Yes, sir, it's the main page for that?
Right.
Right, okay.
And so I, I'm looking at, what I sort of pick out are, are big changes and I go back into the supplementary pages and try to figure out, okay, so, so what accounts for that, just so I can get an understanding of what's going on.
Sure.
And so you'll see that there's, you go up with salaries from eleven to fifteen, there's a big increase. And if you look at the maintenance structure, under services and supplies, uh, there's actually from thirteen fourteen down, there's a decline there. And so anyway, those are the kind of things I'm looking at. You know where I'm coming from.
Sure.
So then, um, I'm on page one twenty-three now.
And you want to know where that twenty-nine thousand in five two two three two went to?
Exactly.
So that moved.
First question.
That moved over to five two two three five. So if you go to the second page, one, two, three, four down, it says from five two two three two. It was just an administrative reorganization.
So you just switched, uh, one place, one category to another?
Yes, sir. Just, it, it really makes more sense to put it under professional services because it really is being done under contract, so.
And I'm sorry, on page one twenty-three, what, what are you?
He's talking about the cleaner for the, the emptying the trash on. Right.
Yeah, the very last line on it.
It's, right. And then, and then if you flip over to the next page. That it moved.
It just moved here.
From here.
Okay. I thought he said one twenty-three. I'm looking at one twenty-four.
Yeah, he's talking about one twenty-three, about what happened to this here and then that moved over to here.
Okay.
And that's what that number means, sir.
Not an intentional pea in a shell game, but you're just.
No, I, I sort of figured that out, but I just wanted, you know, get confirmation as I go through to make sure I'm, I'm reading the budget correctly. Uh, then down here under five two two four one, I'm down to safe routes to schools.
Yep.
And I know you've got a hundred thousand here, but I know the expectation is that we'll get half of that in grant.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So I guess my question is, how good is that expectation?
We have a high confidence level in it. We, we've got a good project. I think we've got an appropriate level match. I, I think really one of the best things we've got going for us is the amount of community involvement we have, particularly as a result of the committee members doing their work on it. So I think it's going to fare very, very well.
That shows there's a revenue, right? The grant shows there's a revenue back in the front.
Yes. Karen is the person who did that grant work, so that's why she's over here crossing her finger saying, I'm trying to come through, boss. I'm trying to do it.
Okay, so.
She did a good job. It'll, it'll be fine.
Then the increase in the professional services that you've already explained, that's for the public's facilities assessment, right? It was on page one twenty-nine?
Oops, sorry, let me get caught up soon. Yes, sir. That's the fifty thousand there. It's the second from the last item under five two two three five.
Then I just wanted to make a commendation. Uh, under the next special department expenses, there's a bicentennial walkway, particularly the railing and installation. And I've gotten some really good feedback on that already.
Outstanding.
Good work. The seniors really appreciate it.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. We're, we're happy to help.
You know, using the walkway now with the railing that, you know, really couldn't before. So that's great. So.
Thank you.
That's one of those things that you get immediate, good community feedback on. So it's working.
Thank you.
Already. Okay, so. Now I'm on page one thirty-four.
Yes, sir.
Would you explain the contract maintenance under special department expenses?
Absolutely. So that is because we have a full-time employee that was really quite badly damaged in an accident and is still on light duty. So there are certain restrictions that this person can't perform. So that's for us to hire contract labor to, to do the work in the interim until the person is back to full duty.
So, so that's for all these facilities that are mentioned here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Are any of the costs for that type of replacement worker covered under our workman's comp?
Uh, no. She's, you know, her salary is covered. She's working full-time. She's just not able to do every, you know, she just has limitations as to what she can do. So normally what you would find is if it's covered, if somebody's out on workers' comp, the person is then charged to the workers' comp fund and then there'd be a salary savings that would be available within the department. But this is a person who is working full-time, just does not have the capability of doing all the duties.
And so reassignment to, and bringing in someone who can do the full duties and reassignment under a, a different work plan would not be an appropriate fix?
I mean, I think there's a certain level of expertise that she has on a number of our buildings that we would want to keep her for.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, you know, she is, she's a certified pool operator, so she has the ability to go in and work on the machinery, equipment at the pool. So, you know, when she was not here, we had to hire somebody specially for that. She has the ability to do a lot of the building maintenance and a lot of the park, or do part of the park maintenance. And she just has some restrictions on lifting a certain amount of weight and those kinds of issues, climbing. So it's cheaper to do it this way than to try and find specialty in all the areas that she's capable of doing.
Good. Thank you.
So on page 138, under professional services, just a question, the contract landscape and irrigation maintenance. What is that mostly for? Seventy-two thousand dollars?
So that is, yes, so that is because we don't have a turf and landscape team anymore. That was one of the decisions we made back as the recession of '06, '07 came in. We took both of the employees off of that job and this is to pay somebody to go out and mow and trim all of the sites we have in town.
So it's all the sites?
Yes, sir. Every one of them. We don't, we don't do any of it anymore. We don't have anybody. We have six employees that are in our utility teams. We have one Buildings and Grounds team leader and we have one Parks Facility worker. That's it.
Okay. So are you happy with the contract work?
I've actually been very happy with it. I've, I've actually been very happy with it. I had some hesitations. This was many years ago. We went away from that. I think when I first came here back in 2001, that is mostly how we were doing the work and it was one firm and one firm only doing it. At that point in time, there was a lot of consternation and we were, we were suffering with a lot of complaints about the soccer fields, all of the soccer fields that were being utilized. And for that reason and a couple of other ones, the council decided to go ahead, let's form a turf and landscape team. We've done that now. Excuse me. We have the work divided up between two different companies, so it keeps them competitive with each other and the work's been fine. And they've, and they've both been very, very flexible with us. That's always been one of the concerns you have when you have somebody out under contract is, you know, geez, are they gonna, you know, try and stick to the contract and, and only do that and not accommodate you? And they've been very accommodating. So we've been very happy with both of them.
So, and they're cooperating well with, you know, the whole water reduction.
Absolutely.
Program?
They cooperate well with the adult supervision of our team leader, with Joe Friars, staying on top of them. It, it, it requires an incredible mind shift for landscape contractors and gardeners to deal with the drought because overwhelmingly their response to things not looking good is to turn up the water because they, they want to make it green and then they can come by and mow it. So this requires a big change in, in the way those folks think. But everybody is attuned to it by now. Now we're at the point where everyone has heard the message. Sometimes, I think sometimes people just forget when they get in the moment and they do things that are like, "Duh, yeah, I probably never should have done that." But they've been very cooperative with us.
Okay. So this is moving on to the Sierra Point Landscape and Lighting. This is just a question of, it looks like again, something was moved from maintenance, this is on page 142, 143.
Yes, sir. We did the same trick there.
Turf maintenance, turf maintenance shifted.
We moved that to professional services as well.
And that means that instead of anybody on our staff doing it, it'll be contractor?
Exactly correct, sir.
Okay. But this will be done through the auspices of the Sierra Point Landscape and Lighting District and so that district will pay for it.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. I noticed that both of the, the water purchases and the sewer purchase prices are, are going up and that I assume is because of San Francisco?
Yes, sir. It was on the order of 25% increase this year.
I could, Ray. Stuart left, but he and I had a conversation about this earlier because the city of Brisbane correlates with the 25% increase, but if you look at G V M I D, it doesn't. It's actually more. And the reason is because that laundry has come online.
Right.
And accounted for that. So the water increase in G V M I D area has significantly increased because of the laundry service over here in Crocker Park.
Right.
But correlation to that, so is our revenue.
That's really changed things. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. But to my understanding that there was an allocation that we insisted on from San Francisco for that purpose and we, we got that allocation from San Francisco. Is that correct?
So, so the allocation that we received from San Francisco was that if they mandate a, a reduction, so right now they've, they've requested a voluntary reduction, which is kind of interesting. This, this whole water conversation is incredible because there are no two water systems that have the same exact characteristics. So we're in a really good hydrologic basin and by us doing voluntary 10% savings, we've got water for a couple of years. But that's, it, we're in a really fantastic system. And so that's why San Francisco has never done anything more than required a voluntary 10% reduction. But statewide, California's in trouble.
Right.
So statewide, the, the governor has, you know, mandated a 25% reduction, which it's just a tough number to come up with, you know, because some people are being required to reduce a lot more. Some people are getting away with a lot less, not getting away, but, you know, because they've been so conservative to begin with. So, so it's just sort of interesting. But what we did say, because of the agreement that we have with San Francisco, that they can mandate reductions and if you don't meet those reductions, then they can impose penalties as a result of it. So the agreement that we have is that if San Francisco mandates those reductions and we don't meet them, and it'll be because of laundry, that then they reallocate a share to us so that we're not subject to penalties.
Okay. So it's sort of a conditional allocation?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a conditional, hold harmless for a three-year period because part of the challenge is that the way those tiers for determining on whether you receive a penalty or not are calculated, a big part of the calculation is your last three-year rolling average. So overall, for our allocation, we're well under the maximum amount of water we can use, but our last three-year average has been pretty low and this business is a pretty big consumer.
Right.
So if we got hit with mandatory, it would just look weird.
Yeah.
Yeah, which even right now, if you look at our water use overall, our water use overall looks like it's up.
Right.
It's because you've got, you've got a couple of big businesses that have come into town.
Right.
And there are operating facilities that weren't operating before. But our residential use, down. Our irrigation use, down. Commercial, individual commercial accounts, if you take those accounts out of it, the handful that I'm talking about, we're all down. So we're doing the right thing. It's just, we're, we're just in that kind of awkward spot where you, we've only been using about half of our, half of our total allocation. And then as the economy comes back, you, you have businesses starting up and, and it looks like, and, and so if you just take a snapshot, it looks, "Oh, my God, you guys are using more water." Well, yes, but not using more water in a, in a non-conservative way. And we're, we're still being very prudent about the way we do it.
Right. Right. Page 148. Explain sampling stations. Hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yes. The lovely sampling station. So this is a result, we, we talk about the never-ending increase in regulations. So there are, our, our dear friends and colleagues at, at the EPA are coming out with new requirements, with new testing requirements. That's going to require us to test more locations in our system on a more frequent basis. And so this is the installation of a sampling station, a place ergo where you could take a sample so that the water quality lab we have can go through and they can test whatever constituents are on the EPA's current pollutant party list of things that have to be measured to the one billionth level.
So can you argue that this is a mandated sample test that we have to do?
They won't accept that argument because they will say that this is just a continuation of the Safe Drinking Water Act and that it was always in there. And now we're just, they've always said that we were going to continue to develop a list of new pollutants and potential pollutants and that's their response.
No, no, I'm trying to get at, I'm looking at, you know, spending money here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Justification for it. That's what we're.
Oh, no. Yeah. I, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I thought you were going, I thought you were going for the unfunded mandate attack on EPA.
Get at, you know, what's the justification?
Absolutely. It's a regulatory requirement. We, we are being required to do it.
Right. So when somebody asks me, "So why are you spending a hundred thousand dollars?" Well, you just answer.
Yes, exactly. Because the EPA is requiring us to test our system in more places for more chemicals, constituents rather.
Right. Okay. I'm looking 151, 152, and I'm looking at the whole tree replacement. This is G V M I D and, and we all know that a lot of the trees in the Crocker Park are, you know, in trouble.
Right. Exactly.
And so it, it looks here, I'm trying to sort this out, on page 151, you have the tree replacement installation materials and then you have the tree conceptual plan, which was done, I guess, this last year, I hope anyway. And then there's a small amount on tree trimming, removal, and replacement on, on the next page. I wonder if you'd talk a little bit about this. So where does all that stand?
So the tree trimming, removal, and replacements, what you're seeing is that there's only a thousand dollars in it in last year's budget. And then there is the 12,500 that's in it for this year. That, that's what we're looking for. So, and I... Now, it, it's fair to say that the concept plan was not done though. There, there is not a concept plan. That, that was not developed. We haven't got to that yet.
Okay. So, but you're not asking for money for that or what? Because my concern is that, you know, one of the selling points of Crocker Park, of course, is its landscaping. And a part of that, of course, a big part of that are the trees. And a lot of them are dying and being removed and, and it would seem to me that we ought to have some kind of replacement plan, you know, to deal with that in order to maintain the attractiveness of the, the Crocker Park. And so.
You know, you're, you're 100% right, sir. And that's actually one of the concerns I've always had is because I've, I've recognized that with Crocker Park is that, that a lot of thought went into the master planning of that and there was, you know, at least one famous landscape architect who had his fingers all over that. And so I think what we will do is we'll, we'll carry this money over and try and come up with an overall palette of both trees and, and low-lying vegetation. Because I think at the end of the day, yeah, I'll just say it. I think at the end of the day, having Crocker as mostly a turf landscape park is not going to be very prudent to have.
Yeah.
That's just not terribly sustainable for the long term, but I think we need to come up with alternatives.
Right.
For the businesses to have.
Right. Exactly. So anyway, I don't, whether my colleagues agree, but I'm thinking that's something we should, you know, give some attention to because we don't want to lose a part of the attractiveness of the Crocker Park to tenants and so forth.
Yeah.
Is that 12,500 for the concept plan or for the actual work?
That's for the actual work, ma'am. That's for the trees that, that have been dying, that we can replace. And the concept plan is money that was in last year's budget that we'll just request a rollover so that we can work on that this year.
Ray, if I could, on that page, I had one question, if you don't mind. Randy, under 52232?
Sure. Yes, sir.
The SCADA maintenance?
Uh huh.
We're replacing the SCADA system as part of the capital improvement, right?
Yes, sir.
And so is this just kind of a, a general?
This, this is just really a diminutinous amount of money for ongoing maintenance, so to keep the thing running.
For the new system and what have you, right?
Well, this is for whatever system you have operating at the time. And you, there are technicians that just have to come in and the, the thing just has to be tuned up. It, it's really a mini computer network and it has bugs in it. And so you periodically need somebody who knows the inner workings of it. It's, it's kind of like having Albert for our network. This is having somebody that works for a, a specific computer system for the SCADA system.
Okay. Just wanted to touch base on that.
Yes, sir.
That's it. Thank you, Ray.
Okay, sure. Just, you know, trying to go systematically through here.
Yes, yes.
On, on that same page, the traffic signal maintenance and, and the, uh, streetlights?
Yes, ma'am.
We aren't budgeting at all for that?
They got moved. They've got moved again, ma'am. That's, that's another moving pea game. We moved them over to professional services because we, we contract those out to South San Francisco, primarily at least for the traffic signals we do. The streetlights, we have a different vendor that we use. Although we do sometimes use South San Francisco if the other party can't command them.
So, Randy, if I want to complain about waiting at, at the intersection at Old County Road.
You're talking to the right people, sir.
I need to.
Which, which leg is it? Which, which leg is it that you're having trouble with? Is it when you're trying to leave?
Leaving town.
Is, I'm sorry, is it when?
Leaving town.
Leaving town. So if you're, you're trying to get across tunnel?
Going across Bay Shore.
Going across Bay Shore, two tunnel. Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes it's, you're just there for a really long time.
What time of day?
It happens during all, all times.
All times. Okay. Well, we'll check the signal and, and the camera on it. It, it's, sometimes we just need to hear that because oftentimes what we find happens is that the camera's either dirty because the fog rolls over and stuff gets on it or there, there have been times at Guadalupe and Mission Blue, when I was sitting there one time and I'm wondering, "Why is this taking so long?" And I looked up at the three signals we have and there was a hawk sitting on each one of the cameras. So they get out of alignment. It just, and, and so somebody's got to go out there, they open the box, they turn on the camera, they look and see, you know, where it's pointing and they realize, "Okay, yeah, no, we can get the bucket truck out." And we go up and they readjust it. It just, they get moved around. They're mechanical things that need to be.
Yeah, remember we had that problem at Industrial Way?
Yeah. That one's going over. And that one's the wind, I think.
Took us a couple of iterations.
Yeah. You get those really bad winds that come roaring down there.
So while we're on that topic, I've had the opposite happen to me several times at Mission Blue, turning left, going up on Guadalupe. It'll be a light that, you know, starts to turn green and a car will run the red light going downhill. And if I don't look left and wait, there could be a pretty bad accident. So I think we might want to have some sort of delay. So when the light turns red going down on, on Guadalupe, that it delays for a few seconds before it turns.
Before it gives you a left turn.
Yeah, because a lot of people are running that light going towards Bay Shore.
That's a fair comment, ma'am. As you, as you know, people come pretty fast down that hill. And I think that's also a note, and we'll stick a note over to our friends in blue next door as well and, and ask them to occasionally get the enforcement on that because.
That was where the big crash scene, the movie Bull.
Couple times I've almost gotten hit.
That's right.
I was up the hill. I thought the crash scene was, the crash scene was at 150 Northfield, sir.
Right there, coming down there before all that stuff was built.
That's right.
Was it right there where, where?
Right there in the corner.
Where Guadalupe and Mission Blue?
150 North.
No, oh, no. She's talking about the turn onto, to Mission Blue, though.
Right.
From Mission Blue, yeah, onto Guadalupe.
Guadalupe.
At intersection.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, my, yeah.
Yeah.
My only observation is that, that it still seems to me that the speed limit there is too high. I mean, it's still 50 when you hit that traffic light.
Yeah. You, no, you're right, sir.
It's just too high. It, it, I mean, there're going to be people who are going to go that fast anyway, but you ought to have a slower speed limit so you can catch them, you know, when people are driving really irresponsibly. And I, I agree with Laurie that if there was some kind of delay, that would help. But, you know, people have the idea that they, and they can just go like crazy and some of them do.
But I don't think that one's regulated by the city. Isn't that the engineering traffic?
It's the engineering traffic survey that, yeah, we.
But we might be able to influence that with the traffic light situation, maybe.
Well, I, I think what we'll do, and Karen's doing a great job of taking notes here, I think what we'll do is look at putting up a set of LED advanced warning notices like, like we've been using on Sierra Point Parkway, my new favorite signs out there.
I'm sorry, what?
So. So, we've got a couple of LED advanced warning signs that are out on Sierra Point Parkway right now, so giving indication, so for instance, if you're coming northbound, before you get to the intersection of Lagoon Way, there's a flashing LED light that warns you there's a stop sign ahead, because again, that's a pretty fast road. And then going the other direction, as you're going south, before you get to go under the bridge, there's another sign now that's got LEDs that warn about the twenty-five mile an hour curve. And the reason we put that one in is PD had told me that within the last year, we've had two runoff and rollover accidents at that location. So in other words, people were headed southbound, going back towards the Radisson, off the road, through the fence, and then upside down.
Ooh.
And they were both found hanging in their seatbelts, because, because you don't, you don't see them. I mean, you know, an officer on patrol goes by and says, why is there a hole in the fence? Maybe I should stop and get out and look at that, but the average citizen goes by and, you know, doesn't even realize there's a car there, so, so I think, I think if we put, there are advanced warning signs that we could put further up that hill to help people understand there's a traffic signal, so that'll give them perhaps a little bit of encouragement to get off the accelerator.
I don't think they, they know there's a traffic, they see the yellow when they speed up.
Right, and I think if you're trying to slow them down, I think that a regular reflective sign is, I, I'm not a fan of the flashing disco lights coming down the freeway, because down Lagoon or the other places, we have them mostly because they trigger migraines for me. So, I'm approaching a sign like that, and I'm trying to close my eyes and look another way.
Oh, my.
And I find them really, really intrusive and annoying, but that's just me, and if you want, I mean, I think it would be, I think they sort of destroy the ambiance of almost any community to have those going all night long.
Yeah, maybe just like a three second...
But again, we digress.
Well, we'll think about something, those are just ideas, we'll try and come up with some way of...
Well, I like the idea of giving it to the police department first, you know, I mean, on Geneva Avenue, you know, have a store, you talk about some obnoxious driving up and down Geneva Avenue. And once a year, the police department gets together with the CHP and the Samhita County sheriffs and a few other jurisdictions, and they put about ten motorcycle police officers on each side, and then they walk a decoy across, back and forth, and they hand out about two hundred and fifty tickets in about a four-hour period. And it has a propensity to bring people's attention to it, and, you know, something like that is, is really worthwhile, I think, you know, to kind of teach people, you know, from a remedial standpoint, to pay attention to your speed and to what's, what's there. And it also is a revenue generator, so, you know, I think instead of, you know, to Terry's point of putting a sign out there that a lot of people ignore anyway, because they do that in Geneva, and then it's just a conditional thing that people just want to go from point A to point B, that, you know, you've got to punish them.
It's, it's really amazing, I think, with social media today, how fast the words get out that the police are out writing tickets at a location.
Yeah.
That gets a lot more compliance than a sign, I agree with you, so I'll discuss it with Chief Massey.
Okay, maybe they could work with the CHP and the sheriff's office, too, and kind of do something, maybe in the city of Daly City, since they are our neighbors and have a lot larger police force, and I'm, I'm sure their motorcycle officers would be more than pleased to participate.
Okay, on page one fifty-five, fifty-six, I just, the storm drain trash capture devices, one place it kind of disappears, but it sort of reappears on the next page, sort of, so what's going on there?
We're just arranging it in what we think is the better place for it, sir, that's all. It's just our housekeeping so that staff can keep track of it better.
But what I don't understand is, you know, you have thirty thousand for the maintenance here on page one fifty-five.
Oh, and now that went away, because we're looking for the, that's, that would be, the person then would maintain that, sir, so the maintenance worker, too, for the NIPD's department that we talked about?
Right.
He would do that work. So that thirty thousand was originally envisioned, and it was envisioned last year?
Or contract or something?
It's contract, yes, sir.
Oh, I see.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't clear to me. Okay, so, we're just talking about installing continually fifty thousand worth of storm drain trash capture devices, looks like on the next page?
It does, and it looks like, I had originally thought that was going to take us five years, I think it's going to take a couple less than that, because we have gotten some additional funding, so we're going to get some money, we're going to get some additional money to do that out of grants. But it was, it was envisioned to take five years.
To where are we at now?
Probably half of them right now, and only the second year of the program.
Okay. Street sweeping up the little, same page, one fifty-six?
Yes, sir.
It, this one actually is declining from a hundred to thirty-eight thousand, so what's going on there?
So that's the money that we talked about, that after the regional board finally settled in, the regional board's staff, actually, I don't want to make you think it's the people appointed, finally settled in on what they were going to require us to do, and how they were really, for our situation, pushing us more to the full capture trash devices. So instead of having to do the hundred thousand, we're only going to have to do the thirty-eight thousand, but that's a part of the hundred and seven thousand that we've captured, that we've found to get the employees, so that's sixty-two thousand dollars, that's a savings there, is proposed in my budget request, to go towards paying for a full-time employee.
I see, so it's a trade-off?
Um, it is, because the work's going to have to be done anyway.
Right.
That we're hiring that person to do. So it's either that, or we could take the total amount and put it into contract.
Okay.
Contract labor, that is.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so I've been watching the, you know, the water and sewer master plan for which a lot was appropriated, budgeted last year.
Right.
So, is that all completed yet, or where is that?
No, 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 it's not completed yet, it's in progress.
I didn't think so. Heard a thing yet.
It's, no, 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 it's, it's in progress.
Okay, so I guess then the question is, but it's being all covered by funds from last year?
Correct.
Okay, so when do we anticipate seeing that?
I can't give you an honest answer on that, I, I believe it's this fall, but I'll have to get back to you and let you know for sure, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cliff, do you have any questions, sir, staff?
I do, sure, thank you. So, Randy, the maintenance worker, two position, the NIPD's one?
Yes, sir.
So, will that person also learn other public works skills?
Absolutely.
So there'll be...
Absolutely. Now that we've got so many different people under public works, we, the marina staff has been cross-trained with regular operations and maintenance personnel. And that actually works out quite well for everybody, because it allows us to have a longer time in between people having to rotate and be on call, and it also allows us to help each other. There have been times when we'll call the marina staff and say, hey, we've got an issue going on over here, we've got something happen at night or wherever, come out and come help us. And then there are days when there'll be a couple of people that are hurt out of the marina, we've had a couple of injuries, and we're able to send maintenance employees, our regular O and M workers, out to do the job and to keep that maintenance project working.
Okay, great.
It's nice to not have a union, in that regard, it's just, it's just really easy to be able, and to have, to have really good employees who really are happy to do that. I don't get a single complaint about that, okay, that's what we do, we go help each other out.
Yeah, no, they're great guys.
They really are, thank you.
The, the handrail for Alvarado, so that's the Sierra Point to Alvarado stairway?
No, no, it's Alvarado...
No, it's Alvarado to Clamath, sir.
Clamath, yeah.
Clamath.
It's the alley, the alleyway.
Yeah, that other one is, is...
Because when you're talking about that steep drop-off, it's like Mono and Alvarado and going up to Sierra Point, but...
It's kind of, it's kind of on the other side of town, sir.
It's on the, okay.
It's, it's much closer, so the, the upper point of it from Alvarado is probably...
Three hundred yards.
Half a block from BS, right? Okay, yes, sir, yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. But you know the story I'm talking about, though, the one that's like Mono and Alvarado, where they intersect, and then you go up to Sierra Point?
Right, that's Sierra Point Canyon.
That, that's a pretty steep drop-off at, on some parts of that trail. So I thought that's where the railing was going.
Isn't that the lower bicentennial trail?
No, no, he's talking about the Sierra Point Canyon trail. Which I've been up and down a number of times.
Oh, that one, yeah.
It is pretty treacherous unless you're very sure-footed.
Yeah, there's a drop-off on that side, so I thought that's what...
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't the one we put in there.
This is just the top of the alleyway, going up Clamath to Alvarado.
Right.
Okay.
Which will be used a lot more, I think, because, you know, it, a lot of school kids walk up and down there.
Yeah. So, I don't anticipate it not being in the budget, so when do you think that you might start working on that and getting that handrail installed?
I would hate to take a guess on that, sir, because I know we've got a couple of the projects that are still, that we're still finishing up from last year's list, so, you know, certainly I would like to see it happen soon. Some of it depends on the weather, too, if we, if we end up, unfortunately, with another dry winter, that'll allow us to do the work during the winter.
Okay, and then, you know, you talked about the fifty thousand dollars for the public facilities conditionist.
Yes, sir.
So, do you, do you see some pressing needs, other than, you know, say, the teen center, I know that that one's pretty bad shape, we're not going to really do anything to it, but the ones that we're fully utilizing right now, do you see some, some really, you know, some stark things that are out there that, that need to be addressed?
Well, I think it's more the things I don't know that worry me, because we just haven't had enough scheduled maintenance. I mean, if you think about it, even in the fifteen years that I've been here, we've had something that we, and we still call a buildings and grounds department, but, but they really have never maintained the buildings. You, we've just never had that scheduled, it's, it's, it's been the nature of funds availability, but it's almost a little bit irresponsible. I mean, as a homeowner, I'm certain that you all are more responsible with doing regular maintenance on your house than we are with some of our facilities, and it's just because it's one of the places that we've been, that we've been short-staffed. And so, I mean, my concern is not knowing and not realizing that something is going to be a huge expenditure. It's a significant part of your, your physical inventory is the buildings and the properties you own.
Okay. Let's see, so on one forty-three was the contract turf maintenance.
The work at Sierra Point, is that the contract turf maintenance you're talking about, sir?
Yeah.
It's mowing the grass, it's trimming the edges, the weeding.
And, but that, we didn't have any, we didn't have anything budgeted for that?
That's the one that we moved, sir, it was in five-two-two-three-two last year, and then we moved it over to thirty-five.
And then, you know, some of that, so that contract work to cut the grass, you know, just driving by some of the ball fields recently, they're looking pretty dry, we're right in the beginning of summer, there's probably not going to be a lot of growth coming from the grass, so with the contract that we have, I mean, if there isn't really grass to cut, or do they, are we so obligated to have them come out and do some maintenance?
No, that's not, not the way we've got the contract set up, certainly we've got the contract set up, it's a not-to-exceed on a monthly basis, and it's to do work when there is work. And I understand your point, but the reality is, there's still some maintenance that has to be done out there, because what we're trying to do, we're trying to let the grass go to sleep for a little bit. But it's a fine balance between letting it go to sleep and not killing it, because you can let it go brown for a little bit, you can keep just enough water in the root system of it that'll grow a little bit, and then you'll be able to bring it back, but if we let it go to scorched earth, if we let it completely dry out, then it's complete and total replacement, and we're going to have a veritable dust bowl. So like, there is still some work, there is still some maintenance going on, there's still some mowing. And I think all we're, I think all we're doing is, what we did here was, rather than try and estimate a drought reduction, per se, we just requested the exact same amount that we had put in for last year.
Okay, so, I mean, if you went out to Ball Field, say, in August, and you're assessing it, the grass isn't dead, but it's definitely, doesn't need to be cut, do you then make the call with the contractor and say, well, we don't really need your services?
We, we can either redirect or lower their services, yes, sir.
Okay, good.
We can do that.
And then the sample stations, okay, the hundred K, is that a, will that be an ongoing?
No, god, no, no, sir, that's just, that's a one-time installation.
It's a one-time, okay.
Well, I, I hope, I hope, unless EPA comes up with something else that they want us to sample in a few years from now, but for now, that's, as far as we know, it's the last run.
One-time shot, okay. And then, you know, then treating our water, so we have the, treating of the wastewater is five hundred and seventy-two thousand, treating of the sewage is three hundred and eighty-one, so we have about nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in treating water.
Are you combining treatment from sewer and GBMID, sir? Okay, sure, I'll believe those two numbers.
Okay, all right, and just, yeah, that's a considerable amount of money that we spend every year.
That is a significant amount of money, and it's, and it's a heck of a deal. I mean, I really think it is, I don't think we're paying an exorbitant amount, I think if we had to run our own treatment plant, the cost would be four to five times harder than that.
Got it, okay.
Cliff, can I, I have one question, if I can piggyback on that one. Randy, on that, what percentage of the affluent that goes there, do you, do you estimate it being potential gray water that could be scalped out of there in the future? Do you have an estimate?
So I can't answer that question directly, but what I can tell you is that when we looked at, at one point in time, perhaps five years ago, when we looked at the proposed development on the baylands, and we looked at requiring them to establish a recycled water treatment plant, the calculations back then indicated that that development in and of itself would not have enough wastewater to provide enough recycled water for all of the landscape out there, and that they would have to probably scalp some water from the main pump station that we have in town, from Valley Drive Liv Station.
Percentage-wise, you think maybe?
I think, yeah, I think, I think it's maybe on the order of seventy percent, but then you've, you've got to end up making sure that you've got enough left over so that you can still have a transport for, for your solids, the things you mean behind you, you've got to still be able to get them to roll downhill.
Not pumping a tire.
Yeah, right, exactly, or big brick.
Thanks for that visual, Dan.
I'm, I'm so sorry, I wish I could retract that.
Times a visual's better than words.
All right, my last question was the, the grant training on page one sixty-four, so that's ten thousand dollars, how do you see, you know, get, you know, doing that training and then turning that into potential funding opportunities for the city?
So that, is that the grant training in OES? I'm sorry, sir, you're going a little fast for me, I'm having trouble keeping up.
Yeah, it is the grant.
So it's in, so it's in the EOC section. So, the point of that is, is this, is that we're going to have, as a result of retirements, particularly in Stu's department, we're going to have some pretty significant personnel changes coming up. And one of the most important things that you need to do during a disaster, although nobody thinks it's very important at the time, is keep track of what you were doing, and what you actually utilized, and where you utilized it, and when. And so, what I'm envisioning doing with this fund is bringing in a consultant that specializes in getting reimbursement from FEMA, and this is a gentleman who's worked for us during the oh-five, oh-six storms, it's Masood Kermani, and working out a program, a class with him, where he can sit down with the employees that are going to be directly involved in this, and go through a procedure where we can set up forms that work for us, workflow forms, that work for us and that will work for FEMA, and then my, my desired end state would be to use those very forms on a day-to-day basis, so that if and when, god forbid, we get into a disaster, we're not asking employees to suddenly work around the clock, work in adverse conditions, oh, and by the way, learn how to use this new paperwork, too, so we can get reimbursed. What I want to do is engrain it in our culture, so this is how we track what we're doing, this is how we track where we went that day and what equipment we had, and then it's in a format that can be utilized by us if we want to track things, but more importantly, so that it could be transmitted to FEMA, and we'd have a higher probability of getting that money back.
Yeah, very, very forward thinking, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it, I don't matter.
Thank you. Laurie, any questions?
Thank you. So Ray covered most of mine, I did have a few.
On page one thirty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, um, this recreation, Parks and Recreational Facility Maintenance. For skate park maintenance, I note that it's decreased from last year's budget, from fifteen hundred down to three hundred. Can you talk about why that is? I'm, I'm assuming it's related to the new skate park? Or is it something else?
That's exactly it, ma'am.
And is, so?
It's related to the new park, and it's also that we found that we, we were having, we still go out there and check it on a regular basis, but we're, we're finding that, it was mostly, and it's the wooden structure, right? It's the ramp, the half-pipe that you're having problems with, and we got a good contractor out there, it was, Mr. Conway probably knows the guy. And he was able to get it buttoned up, and so we're not having the experience of the wood coming up anymore.
Okay. Good. And then, the last question was on the water. You'd said that the increase was because of San Francisco and because their, um, reduction requirements, and was that because of, would we be charged penalties?
So, the reduction is because the rate went up, I'm sorry, not the reduction, the increase is because the rate went up twenty-five percent, and you'll see that in, in forty-twenty, just the straight Water Department, and then in forty-twenty-five, in GVMID, the water use that we had has a twenty-five percent rate increase applied to it. But then we also have a, a big water user that came online, the laundry. So, that's why it's up even a little higher than you would expect it to be there. But it's just a result of the rate increase.
Rates, okay.
And so much of the rate increase is a result of us paying back the Water Supply Improvement Program, the multi-billion dollar project at San Francisco is closing up right now. So, we're paying our fair share of those.
Okay. Great. That's all for me.
Dr. Chu, any questions?
Yeah, uh, just real quickly, because, uh, most of my stuff's been answered along the way. Randy, just, uh, the roof on the fire station?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know we're kind of doing periodic inspections. Can you kind of just give us a, a, an update on how we're looking on that? You know, because I know we've got a warranty and everything like that, but that's also been our problem area.
Roof's been looking good, sir. The only, the only time we ever really have a challenge with it is, is the occasional time when the scuppers don't get cleaned out of leaves, but we haven't had, we've had a couple of reports of suspected leaks, and we haven't had a single case where it's been a roof leak. We've had a couple of, a couple, equipment leaks, we had a, a vented leak in one of the showers, where it's just, you know, condensation water coming back at us, but the roof's been holding up.
Okay, good, that's good to hear. Um, I'm going to, if I could, I'm going to kind of combine, you know, because you're going to be doing the marina in open space, and, and I don't, I don't have any questions on open space, but, um, with the marina, on the, uh, maintenance workers that we have out there that are doing all the repairs and stuff on the docks, at some point you indicated that they'll be, uh, um, integrated into the public works as far as the city and, and away from the marina. Uh, when do you think that that's going to happen? Because in the budget, it looks like they'll be here the rest of the year, the fiscal year.
Yes, they will. So, that was advertised as an eighteen to twenty-four month project when, uh, when Ted Warburton first brought it back to us. A- as we're rolling along out there, we're, right now, I think we're about two months behind schedule, so right now, we're looking at about a twenty-six month project.
Okay.
The good news is that we're not spending as much money, uh, for materials as we thought we were. But the bad news is that the damage we're finding, and, and part of it is, it's, it's not, I, I don't want to suggest, I hope nobody thought I was trying to say it was Ted's error there, but what we're finding is, you go out there and you start taking things apart, you're like, "Oh, so it's this interior piece of wood that's broken here or not." And, and it's really kind of odd to me, because what we're finding is that it's, and I'm trying to give you details, because I, I know you're, you're a boater out there, sir, but it's the interior docks where we're finding the wood seems to be the most rotted. So, like, docks three and four, we're having a lot of really bad wood rot problem, but not at all on dock one, which is directly exposed, you know, most to the tidal changes, and when you get high seas and stuff, you see that dock in underwater. But all the metal's rusted out on dock one, so all the pile guides are just shot. I was out there today with the crew, and, I mean, it's so bad that when they're taking some of the guides off, if you're banging a, to take a nut off here, you'll see a nut over on the other side that you're not working on sheer right off, because the middle of them's rusted out. So, and, and some of that stuff was just, it just, it was unknown. You know, there's only so much you can see when you do a visual inspection, it's when you start pulling the components of the dock apart, that you discover, and it's, it's kind of been dock to dock. They're all different situations, even though it's, it's very, very similar construction.
Sounds like the New Bay Bridge.
It's, uh, we're not, yeah, yeah. Snap the bolts, yes, sir, exactly. And these have been sitting in saltwater, so.
Yeah, and how, how's the, uh, new boat working out?
Fabulously.
Yeah.
Fabulously, that, that has been, uh, an incredible benefit to us. We haven't used it to start moving boats yet for the dredging project, but we will, but we've had it. We've used, uh, one of our employees is a, is a trained diver. We, we've had him over the side removing hazards from inside the dock. We've helped people move, uh, when the vessel Sultana left, uh, they had brought in a company to help them. And, I, I mean, the vessel was just so big that the thing was getting ready to swing all, all around, back and forth on the main fairway, so we went up and we tied off on the aft end of that, and were able to control her. And, and interestingly enough, the harbor master just told me that he was out, might have been this weekend. And so, one of the things he's doing is, you know, surveying what's going on out there. So, he's up on the second deck with his binos, and he sees a sailboat out in the approach channel that appears to be stuck, you know, and so he, he tries to hail them on the VHF, and they're not, they're not answering on the VHF radio, but because he could see the sailboat, he knows which one of our clients it is, and he calls them on their cellphone. Just stuck, just slightly a list.
Keel, yeah, low tide, yeah.
Calls them on their cellphone, says, "Hey, how you doing?" They're like, "Pretty good." He goes, "Yeah, hey, this is, this is the harbor master. Uh, you look like you guys are stuck, would, you, I'm going to come out and give you a tow." And they're like, "What?" Say, "Well, yeah, you, you, we got a boat, do you want us to come out and give you a tow?" They're like, "No, no, we're okay, that, that's fine for right now, but really, you would do that?" I'm like, "Well, of course we would do that, that's part of why we have a boat, that's, that's part of what the service is." So, it, it's been a huge benefit to us.
Yeah. That's good, I'm glad to hear that.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Just with one quick comment. I was there on Sunday, and we had a boat that's engine died outside the marina wall. Who was one of our marina tenants. And actually, the, um, maintenance worker, uh, the marina worker came over to the club to see if there was someone who had a boat, because they don't have the keys to the boat on Sunday.
Well, no, it's because they're not trained to use the boat.
Well, they don't, and they don't have a person to drive the boat.
So, on Sunday, that's correct.
So, they would need to bring someone in off-duty to do that.
That's correct. Yeah, on, on Sunday, we don't, right. We just have an admin assistant, and we have a part-time maintenance worker down there. So, and, and he's not going to be given the, the training to, to run that boat.
So, when it's good, it's good, when there's no one there, then it's not good.
Are, are you advocating for more employees at the marina, ma'am?
No, no, I am not.
Staff that seven days a week?
I am not.
I'm, I'm on favor of that.
Well, uh, lastly, on the marina, Randy, I do want to commend you on the hire of Mike Khan, that, uh, I think he's a real asset out there as a harbor master.
Thank you, sir, he's working really hard.
Yeah, he's doing a good job.
Truly in his heart.
Has a, a great passion for it, too, which really counts, because that makes it, uh, all that much more fun for him, you know.
And for me, sir.
Yeah, sure, so. Anyway, that's all I have for one, two, and three.
Thank you. I think my questions, mostly on that, have been answered until we get to our budget recap.
I did, I, I do have one question, on your, on your PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the initial slide, you had no cost associated with the, uh, maintenance worker, too?
I believe that's because it's included in the budget, it's in, in the NIPD's budget.
Hundred and forty-sixty thousand.
No, is that what it was, fully loads?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I'm going to make Stu do a pop quiz and answer.
That's okay, it just looked awkward on the, on the blue table. I'm sorry, you wanted to, um, before we moved on to the, uh, marina, you had a question? Sorry, I was looking at your slips, thank you.
Being the member of the public here, Anya Miller, it just occurred to me that you might hear a comment. Under the contract to assess the condition of city facilities, first of all, city facilities, does that include buildings and grounds? Shouldn't the partial restroom access to the Silver Spot occupied building, the city building, that door to the bathroom, shouldn't that be looked at as part of the assessment of the condition of that building and grounds? Which's been talked about, there was a temporary porta potty for a while, but it's not a situation that will go away, it has come back every winter particularly, or fall and winter when there's no restroom access. So, you know, I hope that's looked at in some way, and some solution be found to a partial access to one bathroom at times when thoughts are there and need a bathroom, and a pool is not up.
So, to follow up on that, um, comment, thank you, Anya. The, the Lippman Field restroom, um, which was, I believe, not included in the budget, though recommended by Parks and Rec, I don't know, or maybe that's in the Parks and Rec apartment.
It's not funded in, in either budget.
Maybe we can ask a question now, then. Would, would that restroom, if it were to be considered, would it be located potentially on the side of the field closer to the, um, to the pool so that it could be accessible to the Silver Spot playground as well? That's just an idea, uh, because?
The, the challenge with that is that if you put it near the field, if you put it in, on the field closer to the Silver Spot in Lippman, then you're taking up soccer, soccer field space. Is going to be the challenge that we would have with that, is how to, uh, align a soccer field on that field at that point.
So, was any thought put into the location at this point of such a restroom?
Parks and Recreation Commission would want it somewhere, um, uh, you know, closer to the tennis courts, where, you know, the current porta potties are.
Okay.
Because that has the least impact on the?
And what is the cost of the porta potties?
Um, they're about three thousand, four thousand a year, about three hundred dollars a month.
Do we have any indication of how much they're being utilized? I mean, I actually, it never even occurred to me that those were for public use. I thought they were there for some maintenance work, or I just, I didn't even think to use them when I went at the fields.
I think they're a good, um,
Yeah, I've used them.
I've used them several times.
Okay.
So, um.
But it sounded like there was some people, maybe with families, who thought that it wasn't. I think there was some discussion last night about it not being, um, ideal for, for younger children. So, maybe in the discussion part, we can talk about the restroom, because I, I agree it is an issue, um, in that whole, along the whole street for multiple recreational uses.
Well, if I could chime in on that, it just seems to me, uh, I know there's rules and regulations in place, but it just seems ludicrous that we're not able to use the bathroom from the Silver Spot. And that was designed that way, you know, many, many, many years ago, to be able to access bathrooms from the outside, and those doors are still there. It just seems that, you know, next time that we, uh, do come up on, uh, contract with the Silver Spot, that, you know, it would seem that maybe we could do something to modify or close one bathroom off, uh, uh, on certain days of the week or whatever, on the weekend, where, uh, people do have access to one of the bathrooms, y- you know what I mean? There's got to be a way around it, it, it just seems goofy to me that, you know, we're going to try and install it because of the stipulation of, of state law. There's, there's got to be a way around that that doesn't cause us to install a new bathroom.
I'm not sure what the state law is that you're, you're discussing.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I heard, you know, and we had talked about this before, that, uh, you can't just allow anybody access into the building because it's a two-way door. But if you closed one door off, like during the weekend or whatever, to allow, or, or, or certain hours, you know what I mean? That you utilize one bathroom that's, uh, for both boys and girls, and then one bathroom that, you know, people could utilize from the outside, mainly for little kids, but, you know, uh, doesn't allow them access to the building, but just to the bathroom.
Yeah.
And it seems to me we can find a way of actually fixing that without, you know, installing a new bathroom here, and, you, you know what I mean? Just, uh, uh.
I mean, I think, I think the idea is installing the bath, Parks and Recreation Commission's idea of installing the bathroom is multipurpose, and the bigger one is, you know, for the people who play soccer.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I mean, I think that's the main, I think that would be their main purpose. Um, it would be similar to, you know, what we've done at BES, where we put a permanent bathroom in.
I know, I know, we're, we're talking about two different things here.
Right, I think, I think that's what we are doing.
I think Anya was referring to the, the Kids and Things Park, right, is?
Todd Lot.
What I, yeah, the Todd Lot, yeah, versus, you know, the big field, because, um, when the pool's open, you can go into the pool, you know? Otherwise, you'd have to run down to the end, into the field, uh, to the, to the other bathroom, and I, and I'm talking about the, the Todd Lot, so, and I, I think that's what you were referring to, so.
And I don't think, I don't remember the discussion about state law, but I think the last time we talked about it, it was that Silver Spot didn't like the idea, because they leave the interior door to the bathroom open, and they store some things in the bathroom, so it, it was more of an inconvenience to them, and a security issue. But I agree that there's, there's got to be some workaround, and it'd be worth exploring.
I, I mean, if it requires us getting some storage form or something, or, you know, modifying a building some way, uh, uh, you know, I just think there's a, a, a reasonable and equitable way of dealing with this, not, you know.
But if, if that were the case, and we changed that bathroom for, say, you know, Todd Lot users, it would still have an access through the Todd Lot, but would that mean that the, uh, soccer, uh, the Park and Rec doesn't want another bathroom for the soccer players?
No, 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 that's, that's a separate issue, yeah, but.
But, I mean, it, it's all budgetary that has, you know, fiscal impacts.
Sure.
So.
But, you know, we're talking two different things here, because, you know, what Anya was talking about was the Todd Lot, and then we started talking about the, the porta potty down there, and it was like that, that's.
But didn't we put in a porta potty on both ends?
We put a porta potty in while the pool was closed, and then when the pool project was finished, that porta potty near the Silver Spot was removed, because the pool would be available on weekends when it's open.
The first, the first one.
Have we had that problem with the porta potty that's down at the other end?
Um, periodically, we do have some issues with porta potties like that, and we replace them when we need to.
We rotate them out.
We rotate them out.
Right, right.
It's a nice thing about having porta potties, that they're not permanently vandalized from our perspective.
So, anyway, this won't get solved here tonight in this budget, I don't think, but it, it's just food for thought, that, you know, going down the road here, that, you know, when we do come up with Silver Spot, we should have that discussion, because, you know, I, I certainly agree with that, you know, that, uh, and it just, you know, it's one of those head shakers, I just kind of go.
And when, when is their lease, do we know when their lease is back up for renewal?
I'd have to look it up, I'm not sure.
No, it's a five-year lease, and I think it's been a couple of years, it probably has another year or two to go, I'd say.
Yeah, and it's, it's a great service, I mean, I'm not, you know, saying anything, anything, um, bad about them. I, I, you know, it's, it's a great utilization, uh, but, you know, just to expand it to the community-wide for the kids that aren't there or on the weekend, you know, just, you know, something we could do, I, I think, a little bit better, you know? It's a, what would you call that, community-oriented service?
Could I?
Okay, I'm off.
Another, different issue?
Oh.
Adam Mayor?
Of course.
It's, it's, uh, it's in the Public Works arena, but actually, the information is in the overview that Stuart provided, but it's very much connected, and that is the, the NIPD's funding problem. And I thought maybe this would be a good context to bring it up, because I think this is something we all pretty much agree on, that, you know, we're asked to do a lot. And if you, this is on page forty of, uh, Stuart's overview, and the anticipated overall cost of the NIPD's is five-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, which is a hell of a lot of money, and we only have, from a variety of sources, assessments, grants, and the garbage franchise fee, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, which means two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand is unfunded, and has to come from the, the general. and ninety-two thousand is unfunded and has to come from the, the general fund, and that's a heck of a lot of money for, you know, something that's mandated from external, you know, governmental sources, and, and, you know, it, it's cutting in and it's gonna get worse and worse, and there is this whole issue of, of what do we do about that? And the reason I bring it up is that I'd like to make it kind of, I know Stuart puts a number of things in the budget trailer, you know, things we want to look at during the year, and that comes up in our conversation here, and one of the things I hope we look at is, is how do we figure out, you know, a more appropriate way of, of funding, you know, the NIPD's mandate? I know that what has come forth from the county doesn't look very promising, and so that means we probably have to do something ourselves, and that means we probably have to think about some kind of 218 assessment process, and so I guess I'm suggesting to council that we just put that on the, kind of, the study list, to see what we can do about that, because, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, you know, unfunded from any other source is, is a pretty big chunk.
It is, yeah.
Is that a yearly expense or just one time?
And it's been going up and up and up every year, so it really is...
It'll go up every year, I mean, that's just what it is this coming year.
Yes, it's a yearly expense.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea to, to look at the funding availabilities and what other jurisdictions have done, and I don't think any jurisdiction at this point has, you know, complete handle on, on how that funding is being...
It's set up on the tax rolls, but it's just, you know, a very minuscule amount right now.
Right.
You know, Ray, you're on CCG, I know that sometimes is an item that they discuss, I mean, do you have any kind of words of, like, best practice of what they, what other cities are doing?
We don't get into really what each city is doing, the count, the CCG has been looking at varieties of funding mechanisms to help with defraying some of the costs, they've looked into whether it's a property-related fee, and whether it would have to go to the voters and how it would go to the voters, whether it'd be a sixty-six or a fifty percent plus one, and they've done some initial surveys to get a measure of success on their surveys, the fee is low enough that it really is not going to put a dent in any of our costs, and so they have gotten Senate approval to, that the JPA could put a tax out there, but they have, so they've got authorization to be the agency for a 218 increase, but I don't think that they have found a suitable mechanism that would give them enough funding for their effort of going to the voters, and even, and any amount that is significant enough to cover the expenses is likely to not pass in a voter situation, in either of the two situations.
Wasn't there a situation down in Southern California where they, they go to the voters and they, and they, they did approve it? But they, they had a really strong education program to, to those communities.
I, I couldn't tell you that, I couldn't tell you that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you, you're right, Ray, I mean, this is something that, that's gonna just keep coming every year, it's gonna increase, you know, there really should be some kind of, of county collaboration to be able to get some of that money so that we aren't just taking it out of the general fund, but everyone's chipping in a little bit to, to deal with the problem, you know, and you want to keep the, the bay clean, you know, I mean, that's important.
People, people have said in their surveys that, you know, clean water's important to them. Is it twenty-five dollars a year important to them? Is it a thousand dollars a year important to them? And, you know, everybody has a different comfort level, and what they've found that they would feel they could get approved through, through a Prop 218 process is not enough to cover the expenses for the cities, some cities already have a fee attached to their building licenses, some have other kinds of fees attached, and to me, hearing the discussion from the different communities, it's been that, you know, our way of including some of it in our garbage franchise fee has been a good way to offset some of the indirect costs, but, you know, it's, it's certainly not a discussion we can finish tonight or know where we're gonna get that.
It's good to bring it up though, so, yeah.
So, are we moving on to the next, to the Marina?
I've already moved past it.
Sorry, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, so you, we went through the Marina pages, the questions that...
There weren't really any significant changes ma'am, so I didn't have a particular part of it in my slide.
Okay. And then Open Space and Ecology, page eighty through eighty-one?
Ms. Kinzler will be handling that.
Actually, I did have a question on the Marina.
Okay, we'll go back to the Marina then.
You're going a little fast. So, on page one ninety-five, there's the Marina boat maintenance going up from three hundred to three thousand.
Ma'am.
Can you explain that?
We didn't have a boat for two or three years.
So it's the boat portion, okay. I was like, that's...
The boat that we didn't have.
You know, three hundred dollars was a coat of pain every now and again, so it didn't look like it was rusting too much.
We, we had one, it just sat there and collected barnacles.
I, I think that's, that, I'm trying to remember, when, when we surplus that, I don't think we got five hundred dollars for it.
Yeah, it worked at one time, it was a nice working boat, but...
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad little Delta boat, you know, you could putz around out there, but...
Actually towed me in once on it. I'm serious.
That must have been a sight, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So now we will go on to Open Space and Ecology, page eighty and eighty-one.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As I hope you are already aware, your staff for the Open Space and Ecology Committee supports the work of the committee, they also support the work of the Sustainability Committee, I believe this is the Bayland Sustainability Framework Subcommittee, they provide planning support in working on the Green Building Ordinance modifications that have been evolving. Some staff works on open space purchases, right now that's, that's still a contract staff member, former employee Fred Smith. We work together with Fred Smith on vegetation management of the Upper Brisbane Acres, and we host a couple of special events during the year, a couple of Habitat Restoration Days, and participate at, in the Community Festival, and provide research. Some of the highlights for this next year, having to do with our work plan, are vegetation management program, this is mentioned because we've asked for some additional funding in the budget, this fiscal year, fifteen thousand dollars was budgeted, I'm, I'm not sure in prior fiscal years, there may have been more than that that was budgeted, but we are asking for an extra fifteen thousand this upcoming year, because we've been using some herbicides, the Integrated Pest Management Policy that we adopted in two thousand and nine allows selective use of reduced-risk pesticides and herbicides when it's determined that it's, that it's practical and necessary, we're supposed to minimize the opportunities for mobilization of the herbicides into the stormwater runoff, and in the upper acres we're, we're a bit far, but we're, we're trying to move towards using natural herbicides, so that's what this money is for, we'd like to try using citrus oil vinegar-based herbicides that sometimes take multiple applications, so I'm not sure if this thirty thousand dollars will completely resolve this issue, that, that whole area is kind of hard to quantify in terms of how much and what you need to do each year, and being new staff on this, trying to bring the institutional knowledge over from prior staff, but we're asking for this amount of money and we can report back on, on what that gets us for the upper acres. Moving down, eucalyptus removal in new purchase, sometimes when these acres become available, available for purchase, it does coincide with the budget, so money is budgeted to purchase acres, sometimes it's done by supplemental appropriation, in this case, we had forty thousand dollars in the budget for this fiscal year, and we are purchasing an acre, excuse me, an acre that needs eucalyptus removal, so Fred Smith presented this a couple months ago, and some of the money that's, was in this, this current fiscal year's budget is going towards purchase, and some of that we're asking to carry over to maintain, to remove eucalyptus on that property. Like I said, we participate in two volunteer workdays, those have been very successful, a lot of involvement from the management analysts that also supports Open Space, and lots of good turnout from the public to help with those. And Environmental Action Plan, some of the council should know, we met with the council liaisons on kind of a, a first cut of measures that we want to include in the plan, we were going to meet with the full, go through that plan with the full OSEC committee last month, but we kind of got sidetracked by the Bayland Sustainability Framework, so we're gonna talk through that this month, and we're hoping to bring that to a council study session in the near future, you should be hearing about that very soon. And with that, I can answer questions if there are any.
Thank you.
I have none.
Yes?
Just two things, I'm very happy with the current way the Open Space and Ecology is now supported by Karen and Public Works, and I think that, you know, that was a decision that we made to try to reorient the way in which we organized the support for this activity, which is something that, you know, we all believe in, I think, and it seems to be going pretty well, and I'm pleased by that. The, the one thing that, that sort of crossed my mind, and when you were talking about parcel purchase and open space acquisition, and, you know, Clark kind of knows more, a lot more about this than, than most anybody else, with the exception of Fred Smith, of course, there is a, you know, that other parcel, the reason I just flashed through my mind, that, that is still potentially available maybe even this year, and that's, I think, parcel forty-two in the Southeast Ridge, and the only reason that it didn't, you remember, we had the two parcels, and then we've, we've purchased, we're in the process of purchasing one, and that's where the eucalyptus removal is going to occur, but then there was the, this other parcel that got hung up in problems of, of the deed, and evidently, I guess there were multiple owners, and one of the owners has died and without a will, and so there's a, you know...
Ended up in probate.
But that's in probate now, and so presumably that'll be resolved, and I guess, as far as I understand, it's, it's still available, and that's a terrific parcel, I mean, it's got great habitat for butterflies, and so I just was wondering, do we want to think about that in, in budgetary terms, or just so we're prepared, or, or have you been talking to Fred about this, or where does it stand?
Fred's still taking the lead on these parcels, so I'm not that directly involved, and I think it would be of the council's pleasure if we wanted to budget for that parcel acquisition in the next fiscal year.
So, that, that is already part of, that was already part of last year's budget?
Right.
So when you purchased the new parcel, and you've gotten me beat on what number the new parcel is?
Uh-huh.
You did a supplemental appropriation for that purchase?
Right.
So this forty thousand dollars that's in two fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget is set aside for parcel forty-two.
Who it is?
Yes. So, we already have the money for that, we already thought about that last year, when it became available.
Okay, super, so we're on track for that then?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we had problems with both of those parcels, but the second one finally came through, which first, the second one they withdrew initially, and then went forward with it, the one with the eucalyptus on it, if you recall, so, yeah, that one really kind of completes that whole end, and I guess more northern end of contiguous parcels, so...
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, I'm happy.
And I have one question on the, on the salaries on, for Open Space and Ecology, we have one open-spaced analyst that's a half-time position, is... You're shaking your head?
Yes, we do.
Yes, and that...
And we also have a portion of Karen's time.
And the full-time salary is the portion of Karen's time?
Yes.
And the fifty percent is, is...
The part-time salaries.
Okay, and that's a variety of people?
No, the fifty, the half-time analyst is the part-time salary's at thirty-three thousand?
Right.
That's fifty percent of a person.
Okay, fifty percent of a person, but not any one person?
It is, it's a, it's our management, it's management analyst Natalie Munoz is her name.
Okay.
So we have a specific person assigned specifically to Open Space from that position, and then Karen oversees it in only a portion of her time that's allocated.
Okay, and so then our, our work with Fred is...
Just on an hourly basis, and we pick it up as it happens, it's, you know, it's about ten hours here, you know, it's a couple of hours every so often, it's not a very significant amount, and we don't know how much to budget at any particular time.
Okay, and, but he would show in professional services?
He would, he's actually still an employee of ours, so he will show up in part-time salaries when, when we actually pay for him.
Okay.
But we just don't know how much to budget for him, because we don't know if there's going to be any purchases that year, and if there are, you know, if he spends twenty hours a year, he's spending a lot.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what kind of time we were looking at for that.
You know, when he's in the middle of a purchase, you know, he might spend like four hours in a pay period, but then he can go months without spending any time.
Okay, I just didn't know if it, what kind of timeframe it took to negotiate something like this, you know, on a direct cost basis, so that was my question, thank you.
He's very efficient at it.
Okay.
Latter practice.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, so we'll move on to Park and Recreation pages one sixty-five and one ninety-three.
Can we take a quick five minutes?
Of course.